All right, well, welcome everyone to the January 23rd, 2025 Xenia City Council meeting. And I'd like you to please stand if you would at this time. And I'm going to ask Pastor Todd Martin to come from Liberty Life Church and lead us in prayer.
I'd like to pray a scripture tonight so that the Lord, our Lord Jesus Christ, the Father of glory, may give unto you the spirit of wisdom and revelation and the knowledge of him. The eyes of your understanding being enlightened that you may know what is the hope of his calling? And what is the riches of the glory of his inheritance in the saints? And what is the exceeding greatness of his power toward us who believe according to the working of his mighty power? And I pray all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. If you remain standing and face the American flag, Councilwoman Serice, would you lead us in pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. And I'll go ahead and gabble in our meeting at this time. First item on our agenda is our roll call.
Mayor Urshul.
Here.
Councilman Reynolds.
Here.
Councilman Crawford.
Here.
Councilman Pro.
Here.
Councilman Walker.
Here.
Councilwoman Serice.
Here.
Senator Smith.
I would like to, yes, go ahead.
I would like to move to excuse Vice President, sorry, President Smith.
President Smith, good. We have a motion to excuse the president's absence from Councilman Reynolds. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Councilwoman Serice seconds that. The president had a trip, business trip planned a while ago, and had asked us if we would excuse him. All right, thank you. Let's go ahead and vote on that. And we will exclude our two new council members because they have not been sworn in yet on that vote.
Councilman Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilman Crawford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Serice?
Yes.
Mayor Urshul?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. So now we're going to take care of that swearing in so that you guys can vote with us for the rest of the meeting.
We're going to go in alphabetical order.
Okay.
I state your name.
I solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear or affirm?
Solemnly swear.
That as a member of the city council?
That as a member of the city council.
Of the city of Xenia, Ohio?
Of the city of Xenia, Ohio.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of Ohio.
Constitution of Ohio.
The charter and ordinances of the city.
Charter and ordinances of the city.
And I am faithfully.
And faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And then we'll do pictures afterwards.
That's great. All right. All right, now we'll go ahead and do the swearing in of Councilman Walker.
Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Carlos Walker.
Solemnly swear or affirm?
Solemnly swear.
Okay.
Solemnly swear and affirm.
That as a member of the city council?
As a member of the city council.
Of the city of Xenia, Ohio?
The city of Xenia, Ohio.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of Ohio?
Constitution of Ohio.
The charter and ordinances of the city?
The charter and ordinance of the city.
And I am faithfully.
I am faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
Well, we're going to take a short recess right now. If you'd like, if you guys like to come up and get some pictures with families and friends and do that before we continue on with our, with the rest of our meeting.
Thank you.
We're really happy to have you here with us. It's a, it's a lot better to have seven on council than five, let me tell you. Trust me, trust me. So, okay. Next item is approval of our minutes of January 9th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Salute.
Move my Councilman Reynolds, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Serice. Questions or comments on that? All right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Councilman Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilman Crawford?
Yes.
Councilman Pro?
Abstain.
Councilman Walker?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Serice?
Yes.
President, Mayor Urshul?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. We do not have any special presentations tonight. The next item is audience comments. If you'd like to address the council, feel free to come up to the podium, state your name and address. And you have three to five minutes just to share any concerns or items of interest with the council. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the audience comments time. We do not have any old business this evening. And under new business, I'm going to beg the way of the council that we could go to item D, Resolution 2025-006. This concerns the court, and we have Judge McNamee here with us as well. And I'd like to be able to let him address any issues or comments, or hear any comments on this before, before he leaves as well, too. So, so we will go to, under new business, Resolution 2025-006. This is amending Resolution 2024-21 as amended by Resolution 2024-30, establishing the 2024 to 2027 pay plan for the city employees. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. Through provisions in the city's charter, as well as our administrative code, it's established the non-union employee compensation rates and policies are to be governed by city council through actions, including approval of a pay plan for all positions authorized in our organization plan. Further, ORC Chapter 1901 requires that council set the salaries for certain municipal court employees, including the court administrator, clerk of courts, chief probation officer, and other positions. With these governing provisions in mind, the Xenia Municipal Court leadership desires a modification to compensation allowance for its chief probation officer in light of additional program responsibilities that the position has recently taken on. We have with us, we have with us this evening Judge McNamee from the Xenia Municipal Court to offer some detail and justification for their request as presented here this evening with Resolution 2025-006.
All right, so I had not Judge.
That's right. Here and then disappeared.
Oh, yeah. Judge McNamee's pinch hitter.
That's right.
This evening, so my thing, I'm the court administrator magistrate person. Mayor, thank you for your courtesy of calling this first. Congratulations to the new two council members.
Thank you.
Great, so I think I've come, I know I came before you with some good news this evening. I'd also like to extend thanks to staff, city staff, really helped with this. And it was somewhat of a new endeavor for the judge and I. So many of you have probably heard that the court was certified by the Ohio Supreme Court that we have a specialized docket, or drug court, or recovery court, excuse me. As part of that, the chief probation officer has additional responsibilities. One of the things that she did was she contacted Omas, who gave us a grant which is administered through the mental health and recovery board to the tune of about $20,000 per fiscal period. And so that current fiscal period will expire the end of June this year. We anticipate getting at least that, if not more, for the fiscal year 25, '26. The grant limits what those funds can be used for, but one of the things thankfully for us is it can be used for is drug court or recovery court employees' compensation. And what we determined the best way to handle that was rather than to change the actual pay scale itself, that we are permitted, or the court is permitted, to give a stipend to the chief probation officer. And that stipend would be conditioned upon those grant funds being renewed each period. That if, for whatever reason, in a pop, that we will receive those grant funds each period that are available. But if we weren't, we wouldn't have to come back and amend compensation.
Right.
Also, fiscally, I think that it helps us in that the stipend doesn't carry some of the extra costs that a typical compensation would require.
Right.
Certainly happy to answer the questions, and Judge McNamee, he's still standing back there and not making faces. He probably pinch hit for me or corrected if I'm wrong in any of these things.
Sure.
But yeah, happy to answer the questions.
Yeah, let's, any questions or comments here before we take the motion from anyone on this?
Just a quick question. Is for, for educational purposes, for me. You mentioned period, fiscal period, and a fiscal year. I'm just curious, is this, how's this broke out within the, within those time frames?
So, no, that's a great question. So, the, you know, the fiscal year for the grant doesn't align with our normal compensation period, which is a calendar year. And so the fiscal period for this last grant period actually expires this June. And so it's possible that there could be stipends given only one per fiscal period, but there could be two per a calendar year.
And then do you know, oh, sorry.
You're fine, you put your hand in the court second.
Thank you.
Do you know how, what the likelihood of us getting it again is?
Well, and I'm knocking on wood right now, but we're confident that we're going to receive it for this next period.
Okay.
Sure, Dennis, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm the chair of the Drug Free Coalition up in Miami County, so I'm very happy to see that Xenia Court has a, has a recovery court. I just wanted to emphasize the importance of, of this specialized docket. And thank, thank you, Judge, for, for doing this. And it's, I know it's a great need in the, in the community, and thank you.
Thank you.
Also, I'd like to say I'm very familiar with the grant, specialized docket for Xenia and then Montgomery County Drug Probation. We have five specialized dockets, and I'm familiar with the funding. Also, you can use for different things as far as rent, helping clients with rent utilities, also purchasing other, like, lab results or urine cups. So, it's a very, very productive program.
Absolutely. It really gives us some flexibility. So we're excited with the things we can be able to utilize for this grant.
All right, do I have? Okay, you want to say something?
No, sounds good.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Thank you.
Sure, thanks, Mike. I make a motion to approve. Okay. Councilman Crawford makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Serice. Any other questions or comments before we call the vote? All right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Councilman Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilman Crawford?
Yes.
Councilman Pro?
Yes.
Councilman Walker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Serice?
Aye.
Mayor Urshul?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Judge, thanks for coming. Mike, thanks for coming over and joining us tonight. Sure. All right, we're going to go back to our regular schedule here under new business. And the first item is ordinance 2025-001. This will be an introduction tonight. This is amending the official zoning map of the city of Xenia, Ohio to rezone the property at 234 Dayton Avenue from R2 to Family Residential District and B3, General Business District, to B3, General Business District. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. Again, an ordinance introduction is being sought this evening at the request of the owner at 234 Dayton Avenue, asking to consider this rezoning as indicated. The site contains a former residential unit that was later converted into commercial usage. The applicant has acquired several vacant lots to the rear of 234 Dayton Avenue, which front onto an alley connected to Hillcrest Drive. The applicant then resurveyed the lot containing 234 Dayton Avenue and vacant lots, consolidating them into one single lot. The vacant lots are zoned, were zoned, R2 and 234 Dayton is zoned B3. Thus, we have a single parcel containing two zoning designations. So, the property owner is desiring to enter, to take this entire parcel and rezone it B3. His intention is to move a construction contracting business into the location, using it as an office headquarters. In the future, the applicant intends to build an equipment storage building to the rear of the office building. There are B3 zoned properties located to the northeast and west of the subject property. There's also an I1 zoned property located to the east. This is where Hammond Wright Wright is located. R2 zoning containing a mix of duplexes and single family homes is located to the south and west. We don't anticipate any conflicts with the zoning modification that's been requested. Planning and zoning commission voted on January 8th to recommend approval of this change based on this consistency with the stated purpose of the proposed zoning district, the property boundaries, and the adjacent zoning districts. Don't anticipate any adverse impacts, as I indicated. So staff is recommending introduction of the ordinance this evening, and ultimately approval thereof to allow this rezoning.
Great. Any question or comments before we move to introduction?
Yes, just a quick question. Do you, do you know the, the lot size? Is this like a half acre?
I don't off the top of my head. I can see if I can pull it up real quick. I had it open earlier. See who can be fastest to get there. It is .96 acres.
I, I'm familiar with the area, and I think it's, I think it's a, a good business choice of the owner to request this request. And he's got a nice sized lot with his combination.
Sure. Great. Thanks, James.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, Dennis, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I went out there and took a look at the property, and, you know, obviously there's a, there's a big tree break between the, the office buildings and the vacant lot. And obviously, the vacant lot would be where he would be building the storage building. My big concern would be the construction equipment traffic on that alley. Was there any concerns brought up about that at planning and zoning? Or was there any comments from the residents at Hillcrest on the street?
Yeah, I'll ask our city planner to come on up. I, I'm not aware that I've seen a, I have not seen a site plan, so I don't know what the, in terms of ingress egress or any screening requirements would be. So I'll let Brian speak to that.
Yeah, there's been no plans submitted because this is a rezoning request. So, he has not gotten to that point yet. But the, we would likely require access to be off of, kind of expanding existing access, which is off of Dayton Avenue.
In Orange?
Yeah.
Rather than, we would not, likely not want, you know, that type of traffic through a residential alley. So, their, the property as combined already has access from these streets.
Right.
We would likely use that.
Okay.
And there are also screening requirements.
All right, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Brian. Just for our audience and for our new council members. So, since this is an ordinance, we'll do a, just a motion of introduction. We'll be voting on that this week. And then in our next meeting, is when we'll actually have the vote for the, for the ordinance.
Sure.
All right, would someone like to move to introduce?
I'll move to introduce.
Great. Councilman Probst, does our introduction of that. Thank you. Next item is Resolution 2025-004, declaring the necessity of approving city streets and public ways by the lighting thereof for the year 2025. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. Under the guise of ORC Chapter 727 and at your direction, tonight we recommend introduction of Resolution 2025-004, which serves as the required resolution of necessity to initiate the assessment process for 2025 for the purpose of lighting of streets. As a reminder, the city has maintained multiple streetlight assessment districts for newer neighborhoods since 2016. Tonight's legislation and subsequent actions after tonight will implement, would implement a citywide streetlight assessment, and then ultimately discontinue and otherwise consolidate those pre-existing smaller districts. As suggested, the approval of the resolution necessity by council is the first step in the process. Once the notice of resolution, excuse me, once the notice of the resolution of necessity had been published in accordance with state law, and the objection period has been passed, the next step will be the ordinance to proceed, followed by the assessment ordinance itself. It's anticipated the entire process would extend into August or so of this year before assessments can be certified at the county in late August, early September. And that puts it in time for the 2026 process for collections.
Right.
Staff is recommending the council establish this assessment for a one-year period, so it'd be just for 2025, as we indicated previously, because this would allow for us to align with a new contract period with Miami Valley Lighting. And we'll have new longer-term rates, probably a five to 10-year contract with Miami Valley Lighting, and then bring this item back again in a year. And then would recommend at that point that you do a multi-year. So this will allow us, again, to just align the assessment amount with, with what the current rates are, and then do an extended period once we get the new contract. So we're recommending the council introduce this resolution per your direction previously, and consider this this evening.
Yes, Councilman Reynolds?
I have three questions. It might be for Ryan. Just wanted to, what was the cost per household potentially? Just kind of considering across the whole city?
Sure. Yeah, so the, the assessment's based on valuation, so it would depend on the value of, of your home. But a general rule of thumb to, to give you an idea, it's about $12 per $100,000 valuation. So if you have a home that's valued at $100,000, it'd be about $12 annually. If it's a $200,000 home, $24 annually, and so on. So, gives you an idea of, of how that would impact the, the different residents throughout the, the city based on the value of their home.
And just clarifying also that those folks in neighborhoods that already have this, those would go away. So this would not be on top of, but in replacement of what they're currently paying.
Right.
And that would also be the tax value, correct? Now, the, I'm talking about the property tax value, not the.
Yes, it, it would, it would be the, the property tax value, not the assessed value. It would be the full taxable appraised value.
The full appraised value, which is, okay.
Yeah, so the assessed value would be 35% of the, the, the tax value. But here, we're using the actual appraised value. And when I'm, when I'm talking about the $12 is an estimate on what it would cost. It would be on the appraised value.
Okay.
One more for you, Ryan. Just wanted to know, so what pot of money pays for it currently prior to this? Is the general fund, correct?
Yeah, this is currently paid for out of the city's general fund. Costs roughly $245,000 per year. Per statute, we can assess up to 98% of those costs. And so that, it would generate somewhere in the neighborhood of $240,000.
Okay. And then with the money that it frees up, what is the plan for that money? Is to obviously offset the, uh, offset the money that we have lost from the levy renewal?
Sure. I think it would be staff's recommendation that, yes, we would, we would use this to help to offset some of the dollars that were lost from an operating perspective when the levy didn't pass in November.
Okay. And again, we do have a work session scheduled this evening. We'll be presenting, you know, more detail on our year-end numbers from 2024 and what the 2025 budget looks like. And so we can speak at that point with this or without this, what the implications would be.
Okay. So just for our new council members and folks in the, in the area here, we, the majority of our streetlights have been with Miami Valley Lighting, contracted with them. We had historically a group of lighting for Second and Third Street, East and West Downtown, with the parks as well that the city actually maintained. Those were all sourced out of general fund.
Yeah.
For that. But we did maintenance on a, on a very small section of the lights, and we contracted out. Made a decision last year to, to go to Miami Valley for all of the lights due to the fact that many of the other streetlights the city was maintaining just were not, we couldn't do long-term maintenance because you couldn't purchase the filaments, the bulbs, the, the stands, and those types of things. So we wanted to go to a standardized set and have standardized maintenance on those as well. We had four of the new subdivisions, as they came in, we actually established lighting districts for them, i.e. that they were already paying assessment for the street lighting in their, their neighborhoods with those new ones. And then the council made a decision last year, instead of having a whole series of lighting districts, to have a one citywide lighting district that would cover the whole city. The other thing this allows us to do as well is this assessment isn't just on residential properties, it's on industrial, commercial, all, all properties in the city, right? So, so that also helps spread out some of the, the balance of the, the payment there to, to some of the other customers besides just the residential customers. Because the reality is we all use the, the city lighting, and there's a number of the lights that are in, that are in those commercial districts as well, too. So, Brian, is that a fair statement?
That's fair.
Okay, good. All right. Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion for approval?
I move to approve Resolution 2025-004.
All right. Motion by Councilman Reynolds, second by Councilman Crawford. All right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Pro?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Serice?
Aye.
Mayor Urshul?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is Resolution 2025-005, authorizing the acquisition of one red chassis caboose currently located at the Xenia Station, 150 Miami Avenue, together with the rails upon which it rests. Did we get the rail spikes, too, or just the rails?
Just when you think you've done it all as a council.
From the Green County Historical Society. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. The red chassis caboose at Xenia Station is, of course, an iconic landmark in our community. The caboose was installed at this location by the Green County Historical Society after acquisition in 1998. It was intended to serve as an homage to the railroad history of Xenia and Green County. The caboose was originally installed under a lease agreement between the city and the Historical Society that has since expired. Recently, the Historical Society's had some difficulty in maintaining its group of volunteers as members have aged out and not as much replacement with that. Consequently, the society has decided to offer the caboose to other entities who are better positioned to preserve the caboose and its educational value. So in October of last year, the society invited proposals from interested parties, which included the Fairborn Historical Society, the city of Xenia, and private individual. On December 3rd, the society board voted to accept the city of Xenia's proposal to sell the caboose to the city for a whopping $1. Your agenda report details some of the particulars associated with our proposal, but in consideration of the recommendation to approve this resolution, we should note that the acquisition of the caboose is a dollar, and that's our only initial cost. There is no need for relocation or any immediate repairs or modifications to, to the caboose. We don't plan on it going anywhere anytime soon. Further, our Public Service Department does have the ability to absorb the, the maintenance needs, which primarily consist of some vandalism prevention and occasionally mitigation. The caboose will eventually need to be repainted for aesthetic reasons and, and to maintain its viability. But we'll institute as part of our capital, five-year capital plan program to ensure that it is taken care of. Programming will likely involve partnerships with other private or nonprofit entities, so we can continue to speak to the history of this, this particular piece of equipment. The caboose is considered personal property, so the legislative process and records associated with real property acquisition do not apply here. The purchase price is not sufficient that it would require council's authorization. Thankfully, I can authorize a dollar of expenditure. But this is a very unique situation for us, and we did want to have something in our permanent record. Because as we've seen, all of us, the, what we call sins of the fathers, where things maybe aren't well documented, and then we 20 years later have to deal with it, and we can't find a record. So we did want to bring a measure to council and make sure we had your acquiescence and something in the official record so we can document how we got this, when we got it, why, and under what conditions. So we're recommending approval of the resolution tonight, really more as a formality and housekeeping, just to include it in the permanent record. And well, you can't go in and take joy rides on the caboose.
I have a lot of thoughts going on here. So, just as another comment to our Facebook friends, the encouragers there, we're not planning on housing anyone in the caboose, right?
Well, that's a new one. I've not heard that. No, no, the caboose is, is educational and anesthetic in nature.
That's on the record. Everybody got that, that there's no plans from the city to house anyone in the caboose.
No.
Thank you.
We're not relocating the migrants from the Ramada there.
That's right. The ones that we were planning on housing in the Ramada, unfortunately fell down.
Right.
They aren't going to move over to the caboose.
Correct.
I know. We might want the Arts Commission to take this over.
Yeah.
Well, they can certainly help maintain from, yeah, from a maintenance standpoint.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayorman, I have a question. Who, what committee or what individual crafted this, this up? I mean, to, for us to be able to receive that as personal property? Is this.
Um, so I think we were notified through a couple of different means, through our Development Department Planning Office, from our former mayor also. We caught wind that there might be some, some need to, for the society to offload this. And we had a conversation among us with staff and tasked Brian and Eric to, yeah, to, to help coordinate, putting together a proposal, and he did that. Um, I'd like to take credit for all that, but that, that's Brian's work. And, you know, I think from, from a staff perspective, look, this is, it's become part of fabric of the community. You drive into that portion of town, you expect to see this. So it's important, uh, to us to make sure that we're keeping that iconic feature here in our community.
Absolutely.
Um, so, yeah, appreciate their efforts and, and, and those to help kind of put us on the track to this. And this is historic society as well. I mean, they, that was a big project for them, uh, when they did that. And so this is a, this is a nice opportunity to pick up the, the baton from here and carry it forward.
I wanted to say to you and your staff, um, and Ryan, you guys did an excellent job. This was, this is well, this is well done and I thank you for looking after the city.
Yeah, appreciate it.
And it's, it's a key item of the park there.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it's important that we keep it maintained so it's safe to be around the kids.
Yeah.
As well too, so somebody's got to keep a maintenance on it.
Yep.
All right. Did we vote?
No.
We have not voted. We still need to vote back. All right, yes. We talked about it, thank you.
You actually still need to vote.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero zero five?
I'm making a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that.
It's moved by Councilman Crawford, seconded by Councilwoman Seres. All right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Councilman Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilman Crawford?
Yes.
Councilman Probst?
Yes.
Councilman Walker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
Mayor Urschel?
Aye.
Lushy Carey?
Okay. Next item, we've already done, uh, resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero zero six. So we'll go to resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero zero seven, authorizing the submission of an application to the Ohio Commission for the U.S. Sem, okay, how do I say that?
Semi-quincentennial.
Semi- qu, say that again?
Semi-quincentennial.
Semi-quincentennial, right. Also commonly known as America Two Hundred and Fifty, Ohio. That's the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the nation. There we go. For a five thousand dollar grant to share the story of the former Ohio soldiers and sailors' orphans home. Yes, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, sir. Um, as we suggest, the greatest nation on earth is turning two hundred and fifty years old in twenty twenty-six and as part of that milestone event in our history, uh, state officials are looking to commemorate the occasion through the support of local storytelling initiative, uh, initiatives highlighting a unique role that Ohio has played in, in America's history. Through this program, the state of Ohio has set aside a total of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be awarded in five thousand dollar grants to local communities to aid in the storytelling of our, uh, community's history and, and the contributions, uh, that we've made to the state and the state has made to the, to the nation. Uh, these grants are competitive and limited to one award per community. Um, in order to seek the grand award, a community, which could be a city or a county or a village, uh, must first become an America Two Fifty, Ohio community, which staff has pursued and has since, uh, had approved. Uh, so we are eligible. Um, however, we do need a resolution authorizing application, uh, and it, that is presented here and with resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero zero seven. Again, uh, our concept is to focus on this very unique, um, uh, service and, and, um, venue that's located in Xenia, the, um, former, uh, Ohio soldiers and sailors', uh, orphans home. Um, after some dialogue internally, we felt that was something that is really unique and, and, and dates back so far in our local community's history, uh, that it was worth telling more of that story. Um, and the intent is that we would have this, uh, story told through various di, different mediums, culminating, um, in highlighting that, uh, in that twenty twenty-six Independence Day through our local celebrations and things we do. So again, housekeeping added in this evening, but, uh, needing council's authorization with the resolution so we can apply for that grant and, um, I think we have a pretty good chance of being awarded and then we'll move forward with that plan to tell that story.
Are we limited? I understand we're limited to apply for one grant. Is there only one submission of one of these stories within the context? Or can we, can we do multiple submissions?
Um, I think the intent is they want you to focus on a particular topic. So you, there's one grant, uh, award eligibility per community and I think they want you to focus on a particular topic. Um, we discussed a number of other things. For example, uh, the impact of the Underground Railroad in Xenia.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, there were some other things that we talked about, but we felt we had the most, uh, I know Brian worked with Catherine and, and we felt like there, there's a great body of information, images and so forth that would help us to tell the OSSO, uh, story with, you know, with a lot of detail. That's why we kind of centered on that.
Quick question. Are, with part of this, are we going to do anything with Ohio goes to the movies? Because that's part of the America Two Fifty celebration or, or to the Ohio side of it.
Yeah, we have not just had that discussion, but it's certainly something we can look more into.
Okay. And that's like a big push for the, uh, commission, so.
And I think we're really appreciative that, um, that the state is undertaking efforts to really commemorate this, this anniversary. I think that's, it's pretty cool and we're pretty excited about that.
Yeah.
Well, that's quite, I mean, the OSSNE is quite the story, you know? President Lincoln called at the end of the war. One of his final acts there before he was assassinated was to get the establishment of, uh, orphans homes for the massive number of warsmen's across the country. And ours was one of the first that was established coming out of that call and, uh, endured for over a hundred years as, as an orphanage. And literally tens of thousands of kids, uh, call that their, their home.
A self-sustaining enterprise as well.
Right, right, yeah. Uh, I, I know talking to some of the folks who were there during, um, the depression, they said they didn't even know that there was a depression because they basically produced everything that they needed right there in the orphanage, which is just incredible.
Yeah, the electricity, the whole nine yards, yeah.
Yeah, they had a power plant, right? Water, sewer, everything else was right there, resident, the farms, everything else. So, yeah. So, yeah, this would be a great thing to be able to get that story there. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
He's gonna actually apply for that grant.
Uh, Ryan Baker and I think Bri, uh, Brian Forshner are kind of coordinating our efforts and then we'll work with our communications, um, folks and, and put that, that whole initiative together. So we'll keep you informed as that's kind of coming along down, you know, over the next year and a half.
There you go.
All right, do I have a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Okay. Uh, motion by Councilwoman Seres, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Reynolds. Any other questions or comments? Okay, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Councilman Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilman Crawford?
Yes.
Councilman Probst?
Yes.
Councilman Walker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
Mayor Urschel?
Aye.
Lushy Carey?
Next item is a procedural motion and this is to appoint or present the, uh, council standing committee assignments and then also to, uh, appoint and take a vote, uh, for our boards and commission appointments for twenty twenty-five. And, uh, so I will start with the council standing committees. This is on behalf of, uh, council president. Per the rules of council, uh, council president is to appoint the members of the council, uh, standing committees of council. These appointments do not require the approval of council. Therefore, the President Smith has made the following appointments to the standing committees of the council for twenty twenty-five. At the Economic Development Advisory Committee, that will be chaired by myself. Uh, and the, the other two members of the council, of the committee will be President Smith and Councilman Crawford. And our alternate will be Councilman Probst. The Finance and Budget Committee will be chaired by Councilman Reynolds, uh, and myself and, uh, President Smith will be on that committee and our alternate will be, uh, Councilman Crawford. Our Legislative Review and Governance Affairs Committee will be chaired by Councilwoman Seres. And, uh, Councilman Reynolds and myself will be on that committee, have an alternate of, uh, Councilman Walker. The Property and Management Committee will be chaired by Councilman Crawford and that will have Councilman Reynolds and Councilman Walker on that committee and the alternate will be, uh, myself. And then the Public Safety Committee will be chaired by, uh, Councilman Probst and Councilman, Councilwoman Seres and Councilman Walker will be on that committee and, uh, the President, uh, Smith will be the alternate for that. And then on the Public Service and Utilities Committee, uh, that will be chaired by Councilwoman Seres and, uh, Councilman Crawford and Councilman Probst will be on that committee and the alternate will be Councilman Walker. Uh, just for folks in the audience, these committees were established a few years ago to let us have a subset of the council work, uh, some more detailed, uh, information and proposals with the staff before they're presented to the entire council. So, uh, these, these council, these committees don't have a regular meeting time. They're, they're as needed based upon issues that come up in legislation, those type of things too. But, uh, uh, once again, per our, uh, rules of council, the, uh, the, the president, we did have a, some discussion on this at our last meeting, but th, these are the recommendations of, and, uh, a proposal here of Councilman Smith. Okay, next item is our commissions and these will, uh, are appointed by the council. So we'll need a motion and a second on these recommendations and a vote as well. So due to the resignations of the former mayor and the former council member, that's, uh, Mayor Mays and, uh, Councilman Dean, of chair assignments for Planning and Zoning Commission and the Recreation Events Commission for twenty twenty-five must be made. Therefore, President Smith recommends for council approval the following appointments. So he, he was recommending for the Planning and Zoning Commission Chair, which was held by Councilman Dean, uh, that, uh, Mayor Will Urschel be appointed as the chair. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Reynolds, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Seres, any questions or comments on that? Okay, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Councilman Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilman Crawford?
Yes.
Councilman Probst?
Yep.
Councilman Walker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
Mayor Urschel?
Aye.
Lushy Carey?
Okay. Next one is the Recreation and Events Commission Chair and that was, uh, held by the Mayor Mays, uh, in the last year. And so Councilwoman, uh, the council president is recommending, uh, Councilman Ethan Reynolds to chair that commission. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman, uh, Councilman Probst. So a second? Second by, by, uh, James. Councilman Crawford, thank you. Questions or comments? All right, let's go ahead and vote, call the vote.
Councilman Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilman Crawford?
Yes.
Councilman Probst?
Yep.
Councilman Walker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
Mayor Urschel?
Aye.
Lushy Carey?
Those two commissions are, uh, City of Xenia commissions and they are chartered by our state charter. The next item is, uh, we need, uh, we participate in the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission and they request that we have a, uh, principal member from the council and an alternate from the council as well to that commission. Those commissions meet, uh, on, let's see, the third or fourth Thursday in the morning, uh, each month. Uh, we also have, uh, a number of our staff that go and actually are the working bodies of this. And so, but, uh, we, we go as a council also to hear their reports and understand that. So the, um, council president was making the recommendation of the council that, uh, Mayor Urschel be the, uh, principal on that and that the alternate be Councilman Reynolds. Do I have a motion for that?
Yes.
So moved.
Uh, moved by Councilwoman Seres, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by, oh, Councilman Walker, thank you. Any questions or comments on that? Let's go ahead and call the vote.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Councilman Reynolds, please excuse me.
Aye.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
Mayor Urschel?
Aye.
Lushy Carey?
Oh.
Councilman Walker, sorry.
We already forgot, yeah.
That's all right.
Sorry about that.
Oh, you already got it.
So you have the alternative.
Okay, great, thank you. Yes.
I think James is quite easy.
Uh, because it's a two-year term.
So you're still.
Oh, I'm still there.
Yes.
I just wanted your recognition.
That's right.
Keep it up and you'll be on for years.
Before you know it. Councilman Crawford chairs the, uh, the BZA and, but, uh, he was appointed last year as a two-year commission.
Okay, thank you for letting me know.
Next year's a leap year, so good luck.
It'll keep on going. It's the gift that keeps on giving, James. All right, let's go to the, uh, appointed officials' reports. We'll start with, Mr. Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the, uh, financial report, uh, monthly report for the end of twenty-four, December twenty-four is complete. I'll be sending that out to council, uh, tomorrow. Uh, I won't get into any details here as, as we're about to head into work session here shortly and we're gonna have some pretty robust discussion on, uh, financials, both, um, uh, a quick recap of two thousand twenty-four and where we're headed in twenty-five. But, um, look forward to, um, that report hitting your, uh, mailboxes here tomorrow. Uh, I'd also, um, uh, just like to, um, say to the public and remind the public that we are, uh, heading into tax season. I know everybody's favorite season is tax season, uh, but, uh, city taxes, um, can be, uh, they're administered by the Regional Income Tax Agency, RITA, uh, and they have some great options for paying electronically online. Uh, you can help on our website and there are links to, um, to RITA and, uh, that will help you to, to file your taxes. If you don't want to do it digitally, you certainly can, uh, drop a complete return here by the city building. Uh, there's drop boxes, a specific drop box for RITA, uh, outside. RITA also has a presence right here in this building.
Right.
And, um, and are certainly willing to help, uh, people walk through that tax filing process. If they have any questions, they're great, they're, they're willing to help, uh, people work clear through that process from, from start to finish. So if anybody has questions, they're certainly available and can help, um, help people through that process. Uh, tax filing deadline is April fifteenth this year. It's one of those, uh, rare years where it actually falls on the fifteenth. So a lot of times it's, it's delayed a few days because of federal holidays, but, um, it is April fifteenth this year. So, uh, I just wanted to, uh, encourage everybody to, to go ahead and get those filings done out in advance.
That's great.
That's all I have this evening.
Thanks, Ryan. Any other questions for the Finance Director? Thanks. Madam Law Director?
I have nothing this evening, unless you have any questions you can make.
Okay. Any questions for the Law Director? Great, thanks. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, sir. I would, uh, make a request of council this evening, uh, that it recess into executive session to discuss labor relations, uh, per ORC one twenty-one point two-two G, uh, so that I, we may present some information to council and seek your direction.
Okay, good. Do I have a, uh, motion to go into executive for personal matters, uh, per ORC one twenty-one point two-two G?
I mean, the after committee, after we discuss.
No, we're gonna, we're gonna.
I have so moved.
Moved by Councilman Reynolds, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Let's go ahead and call the vote.
Councilman Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilman Crawford?
Yes.
Councilman Probst?
Yes.
Councilman Walker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Seres?
Yes.
Mayor Urschel?
Yes.
Lushy Carey?
Good. Now, so just for folks on council and the folks in the audience, um, executive, we, we have a privilege going to executive session for very specific and only a very small set of items that to have private discussions. And that's why we also reference the Ohio Vice Code section with that. So, uh, we're gonna recess into the, uh, council conference room and have some brief discussions about that and then we'll come back out and proceed with the rest of the meeting. So let's go ahead and recess. All right, we're gonna go ahead and, uh, come back to, we have, we have exited our executive, we're back to the, to the regular session and we'll go, uh, back into the appointed official reports and, uh, go back to, uh, City Manager.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we have provided to council, um, this evening a supplemental agenda report. Um, and with this agenda report, we are recommending, uh, that council, um, consider authorization of a resolution and this would be resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero zero eight, uh, to, um, authorize a collective bargaining agreement with the American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees, uh, ASME, AFL-CIO, Ohio Council Eight, Local One-O-One. Our negotiating team has been in bargaining in good faith for the, uh, past couple of months with our counterparts from this particular bargaining unit. The parties have reached a standard agreement and the particulars of, uh, which we've, of course, covered with council this evening. Uh, the contract provisions have been re, reviewed by myself, our finance department. We concur with the team, finding conditions of the, of the proposed agreement, uh, to be fair and satisfy the interest of the city. Uh, we have noted, been notified that the union has ratified the agreement as of last night. Uh, if council elects to authorize execution of the contract, we would immediately execute and that would bring this round of negotiations to an end. If council would elect not to authorize execution, uh, that would send the parties back to the table and at this juncture, uh, would, would result in advancing to the fact finding because we've really reached either an agreement or an impasse. Um, so again, we are recommending this agreement, which would be a three-year agreement. We are capped by statute at three years. Um, want to commend our team as well as our negotiating, uh, counterparts, uh, from the union, uh, a process that, you know, got off maybe to a bit of a rough start, but appreciate, um, some creative ideas creative ideas and a collaborative approach, and have resulted in, I think, a pretty good product. So we're recommending approval of this this evening.
All right, so we have a motion to, we have on the table to approve Resolution 2025-008, which is approving and ratifying the tentative collective bargaining agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, ASME, AFL-CIO, Ohio Council 8, and Local 101, Zena Chapter. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Reynolds, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Serise, any questions or comments? Let's go ahead and call the vote.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Serise?
Aye.
Mayor Urschel?
Aye.
Wes and Kerry?
Okay, great. Any other items at this time?
This is all I have tonight. We will, of course, cover our 2025 budget and other details with our finances here in a little bit with the work session.
Great. Any other questions or comments to the City Manager? All right, we'll go to council comments at this time, so I'll start with, James, you okay?
I'm good.
All right, I can start. I'll start with you, go ahead.
I just want to welcome Dennis Prost and Carlos Walker into our council, just happy to have them on board. And then also just want to mention, I'm just excited about what's, at least what appears to be moving in the market district with the Ramada coming down, and there's some, there's some other things happening over there. Anyway, we, this is an exciting time for our city, and with that, I have another.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Probst?
I just want to thank the rest of the council for trusting me with the seat, and hopefully I do it justice. I know, as a veteran, I'm very service-oriented, and my youngest daughter, Isabella, who is here tonight, she'll be leaving for basic training here on February 4th.
Wow. Which branch of service?
Army, and she's going to be a chaplain's assistant, so we're looking very, very forward to her entering that next chapter of her life, so.
That's great, good, thanks. Councilman Reynolds?
All right, just some quick things. We had our last budget meeting with Councilman Urschel, sorry, Mayor Urschel, myself, and Councilman Smith. We're gonna go over that tonight. Ryan, I talked about RITA, they were great, they helped me last year, I was like, all right, what do I do with all this? And they're like, oh, we got you. So they did it in like five minutes, it was great, it was easy, and thank you guys for letting me serve as the XREC Board Chair, because I was on XREC prior to being its chair, before I got elected, so this is, you know, it's good to be back with the people that I got to know, so that is all I have.
Okay, great. Councilman Walker?
I'm thankful to be, have this opportunity to be on this board. I love the city of Zena I live in, been here 24 years, and whatever I can do to, you know, to learn and make better improvements, or whatever, just to help, you know, I'm a team player, like I said, I led this area, and I'm just thankful, I'm grateful, I'm humbled to have this opportunity.
Yeah, great, thank you, welcome board.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Serise?
I just want to say, considering how horrific the weather has been these last few days, I have had complete services, and I am so thankful for that. I have had light, heat, everything, water, it's been great, all considering, so the city has just run like a clockwork, and I really greatly appreciate it.
Hopefully it didn't just jinx us.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Has the lights flickered or anything?
Right, right, no, it's been, it's been fantastic, all considering, really, yeah. It's been pretty brutal out there, and folks have just kept on going, and it's been amazing, and I'm very thankful for that. I appreciate it.
Appreciate our president, and Wes very rarely takes time off, but he had this, it's a working vacation.
Yep.
Scheduled, and so looking forward to having him come back. Give him a hard time at the very first meeting that I don't have to chair, he's gone. Thanks, Wes. I'm waiting, it's gonna happen, that's good. All right, just a few items here, being mayor, some things that went on. I went to my first mayors and managers meeting with Brent, and hosted by the Village Yellow Springs.
With their holiday trees, yes.
That's right. So we, I will say that that was really, you know, I've gone to a lot of township meetings and township trustees, county-wide meetings, and this one was much more beneficial to actually sit down with other municipalities and hear about what's going on with them, because many of the same issues or opportunities they have are same ones that we have in common. And was really encouraged by the folks down south in, where's Turkey Trot at?
Carlin.
Miami'sburg. Miami'sburg.
Oh.
Yeah, their city manager, who has just done an amazing job in their council on their downtown area.
You got to commiserate with the Mayor of Carlisle.
Yeah, yes, yeah, we did.
On social media.
Not New Carlisle.
Oh, yeah, Randy.
Yeah.
Down in, yeah.
That's right.
Down in Carlisle.
But I think the city manager of Miami'sburg offered to come up and give us some pointers on what they've been doing in the last 20 years with their downtown, and I think that'd be really beneficial for us. Also, Yellow Springs, I did not realize that has a very active recreation department, they have a city pool and a city rec center for their youth, and so they invited me to come up and just take a tour of those items, and I'm planning on doing that. And as a matter of fact, their city, their village manager actually is a Zena resident that lives here, and my sense is he'd be willing to collaborate with us on, at least give us some counsel on some of the things about how they've been deploying some of those activities. And, you know, we hear a lot of times folks saying, hey, we want, we're looking for things for our kids to do, right? So anyways, it's just good to be able to look at the other municipalities and find out about those things. I went to the, attended the Zena Township meeting, and one thing came out, and I did